I'd like to call the meeting order, March 24th. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. United States of America, due to the Republic, where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tim couldn't make it today, so I'm, uh, running the meeting tonight. I guess we'll wait for the town administrators' update. Did you, you sign the bills?
I did, they're all done.
Okay, um, I guess...
I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda.
Second that. Minutes of the last meeting.
All in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All in favor. Okay. Minutes of the last meeting. Here she is. Go to Town Administrator's Weekly Update.
Uh, first thing is more of an FYI for the other board members, um, so they'll know that the Marijuana Committee has called a meeting, Mr. Orangeville liaison, chosen April 5th at 6 o'clock. I'm not gonna have to do appointments to the committee yet, we're gonna let them have one meeting. Got a couple of new members on there, and they just kinda wanna get a feel for, you know, what kind of discussions we had, and what the plan of the committee is, so with your approval, we won't do appointments until after the first meeting to contribute to the board.
That's fine.
Okay?
You said it's 6th, right?
Uh, 5th.
5th. Huh.
6th. 6th, yes, I'm mistaken. Does that come on your announcements? Alright, so the transportation department came to me on Monday, have an individual, that, um, another individual that will not wear a mask, based on the conversation with the Sheriff's Department, what do you want me to do? It's been two or three times now, um, they're trying to enforce it, tried speaking to him.
Is this...
Different individual.
Different.
Completely unrelated, so I'm gonna call the Sheriff's Department and handle it the same manner?
I would say, we gotta handle it the same way we've done the others.
Yeah, we gotta be consistent.
Yep.
So have them go over and give them a...
Yep, yep, get the plate number, or whatever, I'll...
Yeah, they have, they have his name, and he's...
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Bob's just, you know, as was saying, he's trying not to cause a scene, but, you know, now that a few times, he's been told a few times, and he just doesn't know.
Hopefully, in a little bit, you know, before, too long, the Governor will lift it, and we'll be moving forward, but not anytime soon, so...
Um, next, uh, next item is regarding the rec, uh, so I wanted to let you know, saw that the school sent out a notice on the Blackboard, uh, so everybody got that, and it was helpful, uh, later in your meeting, we've got, uh, at least three people so far that are interested in joining, big brand-new people, um, that are interested, so we'll discuss that, but, um, the rec sent a, um, a new proposed budget that you guys have in front of you, uh, we have made, made the changes, um, we've sent it to Warren Finance, but the vulnerability to look at is that if they didn't send it forward like the, um, the biggest, the question is the whole rec director piece, you know, is that something, this kinda came from their communications, um, I think for the meeting that David attended, they didn't mention it the first time, um, is it the feel of the board that, that we need this again, do we want to try to talk to them and get pros and cons, I mean, there's three new people that are interested today, nobody knows anything about this, you know, safe position, and everything, but they mentioned this, so, I'm not sure if it's necessary, but...
Well, you gotta have somebody in charge somewhere.
Well, they elected a chair.
Okay.
And they have elected a chair, um...
I was hoping that, uh, with this new committee that we have now, they seem to be working pretty good. The only problem is, is when you have that one person, that one director, you get the middleman, in between us and the committee, $2,000 isn't enough money for a rec director to do the complete job.
Right.
So, if you put a, you put an individual in that position for $2,000, and everybody else is like, hey, this guy's getting paid, or this person's getting paid...
That's what kinda happened last time.
And so...
Right, okay.
Then we get the double-edged sword, where now you got a rec director doing everything for $2,000 bucks, and it ain't working out for him.
Right.
$3,000.
Yeah.
And, so, I was, I was hoping that this, and it's always worked before, before we even had a rec director, we only did the rec director just because everything kinda just fell apart.
Good point, good story.
Right, right.
Until we come into a situation where we have nobody to do it, then there's other conversations we'll obviously have to have, where I don't think a rec director's gonna solve that anyways, but, at this point in time, I'd really like to see these three other individuals come in, see if they can run it themselves, and just because that one group didn't, it failed, I, I think with the right people, I think we can go without it. I just like, I just hate to see the middleman affect.
And you do have four current members, um, we have one that wasn't attending the committee meetings, you know, we have other committees I've liked, and we've reached out to touch base with her, everything's all set, and she had, um, turned into, um, turned into, you know, three attend, so, out of the four, you know, you've got at least two of them, three of them that are very active, so with these other three, you know, but I think that, that's right, I mean, the, what happened last time when we had the director, everybody in the committee delegated everything to that person, but $30 a week, that's just not, you know...
It's not, if that was a number where you could put a lot of responsibility on that person, and actually have him be the actual director, then I could see doing that, but not at $2,000, so, you're better off not even having the director until you can actually pull him up and do it right.
Try it the way it is with the, you say they elected a chair, is that what you said?
So they elected a chair, and so the idea is, if you fill these other seats, I mean, that makes it like seven members, but the biggest thing is, the chair not thinking that he or she needs to do everything on them, you know, they need to, when we had fire members...
They need to delegate it.
They need to delegate, right, I mean, we, they weren't the last groups that, when the rec was together, they had liaisons, or people that oversaw each floor, and that seemed to work out well, you know, one person with basketball, one person with state... They all need to feel like they're all equal, so that's why I worried about the director.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause of what you're gonna have...
Try it this, try it this year and see how it goes.
Yeah.
Do you want that removed out of there?
I would say.
Uh, some of the other questions that they, that the rec chair reached out to be regarding, uh, they were looking for ways for people to be able to register online, they were looking for, you know, credit cards online, or Venmo online, you know, some sort of electronic payment, and, uh, Michelle said no, no, and no, uh, hoping to stick with the regular cash and checks at the window, should it wasn't secure, and she didn't recommend it.
Yep.
So, hopefully it's a small hometown, you know, getting up here or mailing it isn't, isn't too difficult.
So, what, what they passed into us right now, we're gonna, we're gonna take the $2,000 off for the director, and so they'll just have to adjust their numbers.
Well, the only thing, this is Michelle's form, uh, Michelle will adjust the expenses, so your expenses will go down to $15,000, um, so net to raise, she'll offset the $28, so, we haven't, um, we're hoping to release the warrant to the Warren Finance after we talk about it tonight, so we can make that change before they, they want to get it.
Yep. Okay.
So I've gotten a couple of, uh, one call, and a couple of messages about the Milton Mills Bridge, I did speak to David about it, but I just wanted to at least on, on record that we talked about it, and we addressed it, um, there are some pretty large holes down there, there appear to be more on the Milton Mills side, but the bridge is in disrepair. Speaking to the liaison, you know, he had to contact the DOT in the Berwick, Berwick area, North Berwick, um, I had left a message, I just did that yesterday.
Yep.
This is state road, and as I understand it, we have no authority over it at all?
No, we, I mean, the only way we could do anything, if we closed that down, would be something through the Fire Department, or something where it was an emergency, um, but...
So even the road commissioner, he's got no authority down there?
No, he has no authority over that road, um, but, um, obviously, if it was a, you know, the road was caving in, and it wasn't passable, you know, that would be something where you would call the Fire Department down, they would, then it would become a big, that's when we could put a road close sign on.
Right.
If it was an emergency, um, not being an emergency, we have to just call, we gotta get a hold of Scarborough, if, if North Berwick or Alfred doesn't get back to us, I could, um, you know, we can have our road commissioner take care of that end, call Scarborough, um, that's the main office in this, this district, so, um...
Did I ask him if he's been done with either one, or have you seen it?
Oh, I've seen it.
Have you seen it recently?
I've seen it, they, uh, Milton filled it in with sand.
Oh, recently?
Yes, and I was over yesterday, and they filled the hole in, pulled the area.
So, but, um, obviously, there's a reason why that hole was there, so, we probably oughta be getting a hold of Scarborough, and letting them know what's going on, so they, they can do their own evaluation, because that's one of the last places they look, is up there on Milton Mills Road, so, um, but...
Alright, so I'll try, uh, I'll try to leave another message, and then I'll, uh, maybe add a step in if I'm not able to...
So the only other way around that is, what, down French Street, and over, around
Yeah.
The back of Iron Millers, and felt that way?
Yeah, I mean, there's already a, uh, there's already a posted sign for trucks and stuff anyway.
On French Street, yeah.
Well, no, it's not on French Street.
No?
No, that's the problem.
Thought we had a conversation about that one time?
Yeah, we never posted French Street.
Okay.
Uh, it's posted it out because of the seasonal.
Right.
But, um, it may be something that we oughta consider, you know, talking to Adam about, because what's, what's gonna happen is a second, if people are running out of that bridge anyways, and what's happening is trucks are trying to make it out of the French Street, trying to make that corner coming out, that's a traffic hazard.
Yep.
Yeah, and we've had some issues where, uh, that rock wall there, um, has been hit by trucks making the corner, 'cause they can't make it, they end up taking the rock wall out.
Right.
It may be something that, it'd be to our benefit to post it like we've done, um, Hopper, okay, but post it, I would say to passenger car only.
Right.
Just so that we don't have to worry about that, that way it forces them up further.
'Cause if you're coming down, and French Street, French Street cuts off on the left, right?
Yeah.
So if you keep going straight, is that, that's where that bridge is that we have the issues with? So if the bridge, they were having the issues with the, with the holes?
Yes.
Okay, so if the state decides to just put a barricade across and say, it's closed, French Street is now the new thoroughfare?
It is, but if we post French Street, 'cause the problem is, if they do that, right now, a truck comes down over the hill, that's forcing them down French Street.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't want trucks going on French Street, 'cause French Street ain't much of a road as it is.
Right, right, yeah, it's a, yeah...
We should be taking an initiative right now, of posting that off just to passenger vehicles, and having the state, or even us, post further up, even at the beginning, French Street closed, that way there...
Yeah, or posted, not closed.
Yeah, well, posted, that's what I mean.
Posted, yeah.
Yeah, passenger vehicles only, or something like that, that way there...
And would that buy us any pressure on the state to do something with the bridge sooner?
I don't think it's gonna push them any, 'cause they can close off, it doesn't matter to them, it's not hurting them none.
Right.
Uh, 'cause they got alternate routes, they can cut County Road, or if they're coming from Stanford, they can call up 202 up, um, Milton, uh, Fox and Ridge Road, so, uh, but it may be to our, our benefit to shut that down, so you don't have that occasional log truck decide that's the quickest route, 'cause, um, that road won't last long with any large weight going down it, so...
Probably oughta, probably oughta do it.
Yeah, so, I mean, um, I mean, that's something we, we can have Adam do, get some signs made up, you know...
You want me to just forget, go through truck signs?
I would just put passenger vehicle only.
Okay.
Because...
What?
I'll talk to you.
You're pointing me?
Yeah, I'm pointing at you. To get signs for you.
Tell him what, tell me what I'm gonna do for Adam, what's...
Oh, he's all signs, lots of, passenger vehicles only.
Yeah, and we probably oughta have a sign that we can have put on Milton Mills Road at, before County Road, saying, French Street closed, you know, to passenger vehicles only, that way there they can divert, so they don't get there, and then go, now where do I go?
Yeah, yeah, French, yeah, French Street passenger vehicles only?
Yeah.
No trucks, or something like that, however?
So, um, you're gonna have to call, um, either North Berwick or Alfred, I can't remember, I think North Berwick takes care of Milton Mills Road during the summertime, and Alfred does it in the winter, they switch, so, but you're gonna have to call them, 'cause you're gonna have to get permission from them to put the sign up.
Okay.
I'm gonna Friday, I won't call it all.
Yeah, yeah.
Sorry. Uh, next is just an FYI, the absentee ballots will be available on Friday, March 26th, that's this Friday, that's the April 27th election, on top of, because it's just a bank, yeah, they're gonna be ready on Friday, March 26th. Uh, next thing that I wanna talk about is just the, is the petition process, and this isn't so much for the board of selectmen, this is more for the, the public, um, because I, I think that it's important that this information get out there, um, I've gotten a couple of calls on it, I've gotten two residents that have called me with concerns on why the board of selectmen may be overstepping boundaries that they may have, so I just thought it might be a good time to...
I was actually gonna ask you to, to do this tonight.
Okay, so, main state law allows anybody to create a petition as a main resident to their local selectmen for whatever reason they want, now it can be a legal petition, it can turn out to be illegal, it can be something that can never be enforced, but you have the right to create a petition, it has to have certain things on a petition, um, and we've always assisted with people that, you know, need help with the columns, or figuring out the statutes, but you have the right as acting voter to petition the selectmen for anything, there are basic requirements, and usually when someone comes to me and wants to petition, we just copy the entire chapter out of main municipal elections, and we just give them the chapter, and say, because that's gonna break down the basic requirements, the notices, how they have to have it, what the voter has to do, but it kinda guides them through what they wanna do. Now, it is true that there are two different, two different ways to petition the, the selectmen, or the town, you can petition, and you can specifically ask for, you can reference Section 2522 or 2528 in the main state statute, the difference between the two is whether or not you want your petition voted on at an open town meeting, when we all get together and it's a show of hands, or if you reference 2528, you are specifically saying, I want my ballot, my petition on a secret ballot behind the curtain when the whole field from late to eight. In any event, the, the town actin received a petition last August, and what the law says is that you have to either call the public, you either have to call our elections in 60 days, or place it on the next warrant, so if we're in September of 2020, if we go back mid-COVID, we know that we already had our annual town meeting, and voted on that by secret ballot in July, so since September of 2020, we have not had any type of election in the town acton, whether it's open or referendum, so when the ballot comes in, when the petition comes in, we certify the signatures, um, we always send every petition to legal, it's just common practice, um, to make sure that everything on there is, is the way that it should be, um, because that's not, you know, you don't want that to come down to one person in an office somewhere, sitting behind a desk, making that final decision, has this document met all legal requirements? Yes, attorney said that, not Jennifer Earth, so when we send it to legal, that's common practice, um, main municipal often tells us that they see petitions that come across that can never be enforced, that, that are never gonna be legal, but sometimes towns pass them, um, I'm not saying that's the case with this one, I'm just saying that it's regardless of what it says, it can be moved forward with these requirements, so, the petition that this particular board received referenced Section 2522, and what 2522, when the main state law says, is that you must put it on the next warrant if you don't call it within 30, within 60 days. The individual that, that circulated this petition, probably within the last 30 days, contacted me, and, well, I mean, let's back up, so when the board, when the selectmen received this back in August of 20, they decided as a group that they wanted it at the next open town meeting, they wanted the voters to be able to have a roundtable discussion at an open meeting and talk about it, so that was their decision that they made at that meeting. The person that circulated the petition reached out to me and said, I think the selectmen may be influencing voters one way or the other, I don't agree with the open town, I'm asking you to put it on a secret ballot. Well, the selectmen didn't get what they wanted, the petitioner, it's not a matter that he got what he wanted, it's the quote that it's the next warrant signed, so the board of selectmen agreed that the school committee, the school warrant articles would go on a secret ballot referendum, so since September of 2020, the next warrant signed was for April 27th of 2021, and it's by secret ballot referendum, so that petition by law has to go on that warrant, so it's not that, you know, we didn't do it the way they ended up, they originally wanted it, and just because he happened to make that change, it's, we didn't change it because of that, it was just the next warrant, it's just how it worked out. The other big misconception is, why are you having public hearings, and why is the Warren Finance making recommendations, why is the board of selectmen making recommendations? So, under Title 30 MSRA, it says that it requires that the municipal officer hold a public hearing on the subject of an article to be voted upon by a secret ballot referendum, anything other than a candidate election, so they're holding a public hearing on April 12th, they have to by law, okay, they have to have a public hearing, if you're voting on it behind a closed curtain, when else is the voter gonna be able to answer their questions, or understand the petition article if they happen to not be able to sign it? So they're not having a public hearing, and it shouldn't be a biased one-way hearing, I mean, they're going to, you know, hopefully the petitioner's gonna be present, because that person's the only one that can explain their, the article, you know, it's, it's not up to the board to defend, or, you know, or answer questions on this, because it's really not, it's not their article, um, you know, it's no different than when the planning board has zoning changes, we have to have a public hearing, so that everybody can understand in advance. The other piece, so I want the, the residents of Acton to know that that public hearing is being held, because by law it has to, um, the other documents that I'll reference very quickly is the Warren, the Warren Finance ordinance, we all know the difference between an ordinance and a policy, policies are voted on by municipal officers, and they can be changed at any time, sometimes they follow their policies, sometimes they make changes to their policies, and they have the right to do that as municipal officers, but when the voters vote on an ordinance, you have to follow every word in that ordinance, the selectmen have no authority, nor does anybody here, including myself, have the authority to change an ordinance unless it goes back before town meeting, so the Warren Finance ordinance that was adopted says, the committee shall review all proposed warrant articles, except any article which involves the election of municipal officer, and shall obtain factual data to determine their efforts on the town, after due consideration and study, the committee shall make a recommendation as to whether the proposed warrant article should be approved based on the committee's consideration, so the recommendations that are going to be on the warrant, and the public hearing, are all by state law, so, um, just a little bit of information for the public, that, you know, we encourage you to call the town hall, come in, let us show you the statutes, let us show you what we have, this is, you know, the selectmen may have opinions on it, but at the end of the day, I'm your clerk, and I'm gonna make sure that the laws of these elections are followed to a T, regardless of how anybody feels on the article, so I can assure you that everything has been done to a T legally for this petition.
Well, that, well, that, well, that does, it makes it so that everybody gets a chance to discuss the article, and if there's any questions, nothing just gets slid under the rug, it's all in the public, and I don't know why anybody would complain about that, for a simple reason is unless you wanna slide it under the rug, and hopefully it flies, because, you know, there's opinions, and, and, and a public hearing could sway somebody to vote for something, it's not, it's not, it could be the opposite effect of what the individual thinks, and I just, I don't understand why it's an issue, but I did see it all over Facebook, and this and that, that we were going above and beyond what we're allowed to do, and, um, but I think, thank you for clarifying that.
Alright, so the next item, um, is the code enforcement officer reached out to me about planning board training that they have coming up, being municipal, um, it's gonna do some training on planning boards, um, everything from, you know, running a meeting to motions, and just basic, um, information that he thought would be good, um, we talked about doing it, 'cause it's all via Zoom still, we talked about having it set up here, and being able to protect it off the, the, um, vector, um, some of them were more, more comfortable doing it from home, um, the question is, I mean, the, the planning board is appointed by the board of selectmen, we have three of the seven members that are interested in doing it, thoughts?
Other the three, are there any, other the three that wanna do it, do they wanna do it here, or do it home?
No, I guess, my bad, is there a concern that the, they're gonna do it from home, I'm sorry, that was my question, the concern is, the question is, I'm gonna choose his board carefully, is there any concern from the selectmen, or from the planning board members, that the other four people?
I'd love to see all of them take it, I mean, but, but I don't think we can force it, so, I would highly encourage them to take it.
And I imagine he did that, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, and if they, you know, if there's any of them that aren't...
Oh, I'm sorry, it was four.
Yeah, if there's any that aren't comfortable doing it from home, or whatever, then by all means, set it up.
So maybe I'll have to reach out to the ones that weren't interested, and see what they...
They weren't interested in just doing it, period, or they just weren't interested in...
I was at a meeting, so I really don't wanna, I'm kinda thinking he had four, I'm sorry, four of them.
I would think that would be, um, beneficial to the whole...
Oh, it definitely would be, I mean, we can't force it.
Right, and it's, right, and it's possible, one of them might have possibly had it in the past, based on his history, or maybe two of them might have had it based on their seniority, so, I'll have to reach out to them individually and see if there's something we can do to help, you know...
Yeah, and even though you've had a class like that in the past, it's still is good to, to take it again, and get brushed up on whatever might be new, so, yep.
Uh, next is just kind of an FYI from, uh, questions that we forwarded from the, uh, the Warren Finance, uh, that came across from one of the members, um, expense summaries for 17, 18, and 19 were submitted, this was submitted this afternoon, copy of the insurance policy, listing participants in the town health plan, um, the treasurer did send over the copy of the law and the policy, um, that, that's no longer public information, they can know how many employees are on the plan, but they can't know who, because they're related to the involvement.
Yep.
Analysis of the indirect cost for the library, heat, electricity, insurance, and building maintenance, the library nonprofit purchased their own supplies, equipments, internet, so she was able to send all these over, um, we did a request that David wanted memory stick, I don't know if you guys saw the email, that, um, we never allowed anybody to, to bring in something like that, an outside device, and insert it in the town server, or the town computer, so we sent them, we weren't able to send it, yeah, yeah, we just sent it electronically instead, is that okay? Uh, last thing, I sent you all an email, and, uh, real information, nurse, about more information about the meaning of the bridges, did I get this? I don't know, I might have just sent it to Adam, 'cause it might be just...
I saw something about that, I wasn't too sure.
So this is, uh, from the insurance company, so maybe we can just fill it out real quick, I don't know how, my began, how you're headed, so Vault Dam is located on Acton Bridge Road, okay, they wanna know the year built, the height, the capacity, and the federal classification, um, Canal Bridge, they'd like the same information, and Road Bridge.
The one on, uh, the Vault Lake one, that should, wouldn't that be in the, uh, the EMA?
Yeah, it could be.
Yeah.
All that stuff should be on the bridge reports, all that information should be on there, you should have all those bridge reports.
Road Bridge is on the road, Opera. Do you think their bridge ports are gonna say what year, because the state will know what year that is?
Yeah, most likely would have that.
That's all the information.
The federal classification, what is that?
It's on there.
What, I don't know what you mean, is it just the, like, what number of the bridge is that now?
I'm pretty sure it's probably whether, of hazard, right?
Hazard classification.
That probably would be on the bridge report too, wouldn't it?
What's that?
That would be on the bridge report too.
It's on the bridge report, but I'm sure it is, it depends, if they're talking like, like New Hampshire classifies it like an E2 is, if that's an E2 bridge, I don't, you're gonna look at the, show me your bridge report, and I'll show you where it is. All set?
Sure.
Nice, okay, so we've done warrant bills, approval of the agenda, um...
Think we're down a minute.
Okay, I am gonna make a motion, we approve the minutes of the March 17th meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Uh, Department, Department Hedge Committee Chair Updates, do we have any? I don't see any, okay, old business, Canal Bridge, letter of intent.
So since our last meeting, we have, um, a letter that came in from Ian Associates, um, ran, referenced the above-mentioned program, he's aware, attended the meeting, his brother was as mentioned, that Town Wakefield had performed some excavation and research, and, so he's got a breakdown of that, but more importantly, and I don't know if we're gonna be able to see it, I know I just, you know, have to call a friend, but on the scope, this should have this, on the scope, there are, of everything, he started them as well, so he added one, two, three, four, five, six things, the removal of 5,500 square feet of pavement, install, revise, four of the ten-door bridge, furnish a 165 crane, install 20 loads of crushed gravel, 120 tons of pavement, install 12 bridge mounted pit posts, the prices went up a little bit, but he's also added a bunch of construction work, um, I wanted you to... I wanted you to.
So what he's pretty much done now is he's going, he's given us a price on taking care of all the excavation part of it.
I haven't read this straight through, but I know it's long as well.
Well, he's got a hundred and twenty tonne of pavement.
Yeah, that was thirty before, so he's up that.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, he's got twenty loads of crushed gravel before, I think he had like.
Three or four.
Something like that.
Yeah, it was a small load, maybe, it might have been six.
At the end, yardage last time instead of loads.
Yeah.
Um, so he has given us a total base, a total bid to complete, that's with everything at two seventeen, and half of that would be paid by Wakefield.
Yep, that's how I understand it.
And this, did you see the car lot I just kind of wrote through, but it just says that, um, meetings would be in the best interest of both municipal and municipal parties to go with a forty-foot span instead of the thirty-four after the meeting had been had. Originally I thought, uh, this way was trying, was trying to keep the cost down against a bigger span, additional headpost and barrier.
And it's basically just going to take it back further away from, from what's in now, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think that makes sense. He actually, I actually did have a brief conversation with him, we're having him look at a bridge in Rollinsburg. And, uh, when he came down, he got five minutes of my time to talk about some of this and he kind of felt, the other night when he was here, that he kind of got, um, not sidetracked, but, you know, he, it wasn't understood what the thirty thousand was for. So that's when he went back and recalculated and refigured and thought, and he didn't ask me ahead of time, he just went back and did this. So to recalculate it based on what the conversations were here that night, last Wednesday night, which he thought was, you know, was, was good information to get back. So, um, he was quite happy with that meeting and the way it was, the information he got from it. So some of that was, it was bothering him a little bit as to some of the misunderstandings. So he wanted to clarify that and straighten it out and this is what he came back with, so. And he didn't, he didn't come to me to, to, I mean, I know he had the liaison to it, but, okay. It's just, he happened to be in the same room as me, so.
He was talking about a thirty-two foot span before?
Yeah.
Yeah. And so by going with a forty, you can stay away from the existing bridge.
Yep, stay away from the existing bridge abutments, push that out some more so it won't be anywhere.
Off the, I think, three feet, four inches off the original bridge now.
Yep.
Higher.
Yep.
In the original point.
So that will put some people at ease.
Yep, yep, just to keep it up off the original bridge so that doesn't even become an issue of getting close to touching it.
Yeah, and it's not really affecting our overall number.
Right, no, I think his, his dollars, he, he's, looks like he's doing quite a bit more work for just a little bit more money, so.
So I sent this to the warrant finance, I sent it to the, uh, board committee and the commissioners, um.
Yep.
The, um, so that brings you to one oh eight, um, what do you want to do with the warrant article?
We're at one twenty-five right now, correct?
Let's see, one oh eight.
You still want to add?
I'd still want to put a little buffer on that, I think.
So ten percent would be?
Just to, you know, the ten.
Ten thousand eight hundred and fifty.
Yeah.
If we're giving one nineteen, we could lower it from one twenty-five to one twenty? Or you want to leave it the way?
I, I, I would, if it, you're only talking five thousand dollars, any of the money that, I don't know, I, I think that any money that we have left over, we're just going to, we put it in the article, put back into the bridge.
Yep.
So yeah, that was something that David mentioned, it's not in the warrant, so we need to talk about that is, and if we, that may help, you know, that may help some of the concerns about us over budgeting, if you will. We change the article that if passive and unexpected funds goes directly into the bridge, in the bridge reserve accounts, we'd have to change the article something.
Yep. I mean, he, he, Mr. Bean, every time I say that, I chuckle, but, uh, you have, you have to know English humor. Uh, he went over, what, Thursday, I think it was, uh, Thursday or Friday, Friday, and shot some grades. That's where we got the numbers for the side road there, I don't know the name of the side road, so.
Robinson.
Yep, Robinson, to try to get that blended back in better, so. Um, I kind of wish one of our guys was there when he did it because I don't think anybody was, but he just kind of, he came back down just to reshoot it, just to see where it was, so. Um, and he felt as though it was going to be a fair transition, he was concerned that it was going to be a big dip and whatnot, so. But we're getting with this, is if we have the little extra money in there and we see that as it's being done, it's not exactly how we want to see it, we've got a little more money in there to throw some more gravel at it and whatnot, so.
Yeah, just in case.
I don't want to tighten ourselves up too tight.
Yeah.
I mean, we've never dealt with this guy before, a lot of towns in New Hampshire have, and I guess they've had great luck, but.
I, I look at, I look at it also too as the little bit of money that we're actually spending on this project.
Exactly.
And what we were going to spend on this project.
Yeah, we're talking half a million to a million dollars.
Yeah.
And more, so.
So I, I think that if we, we roll with the number that we originally planned, write into the article that any money goes.
The unexpended dollars goes into the bridge fund.
It's only going to help us in the long run anyways, and it doesn't put us in a spot where in case something dramatic happens.
Yep.
Um, we get a little bit of play.
Yep.
Because on a project like that, everybody knows that something could go wrong.
Exactly, exactly. If you're building a house or whatever, you're going to have a reserve built into it, so.
Yep.
We've just got our reserve down by a lot compared to what we were going to do, so. Yep, I'm all for it.
So, um, I must have sent that to the board for their review, so we'll leave the number and I think we'll have to amend the article when we get to it. But he asked you for a letter of intent, intent, this is what I drafted and consented to review it, um, but we're not going to be willing to. So please consider this a formal letter of intent from the Town Act to Maine to move forward on the Canal Bridge project. For our conversations however, that intent contingent on the passing of the warrant article funding said bridge at our annual town meeting on June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one, shall that article pass as written and recommended. The Town of Wakefield and the Town of Wakefield, New Hampshire also funds their half as scheduled. The Town of Act will be rewarding the Canal Bridge project M A Bean Associates LLC. Should the article fail at the June nineteenth, twenty twenty-one town meeting, or should the Town of Wakefield, New Hampshire pull out, the Town of Act will be under no obligation to continue the work on the bridge, on the Canal Bridge. The parties must also enter into a mutually accept written contract for the work. So right out of that last line, but other than that, who's happy with the letter?
Yep.
Something doing fine?
Yep.
Clear? Yeah, I think, do both of you have a draft on it?
No.
You don't have it right in front of you.
Nope. I'll make a motion that we sign the, uh, letter of intent with M A Bean Associates.
I'll second that. All in favor?
I'll sign this one and send it down to you. Apparently my flying skills are not good. There you go. I was hoping it would fly right down there to him. Yeah. I don't know if this keeps up, we're going to need one of them little tubes that they have at banks.
Okay, I'm going to go down to planning board appointments.
So at last week's meeting, um, you indicated that you might be interested in getting some more information, um, from an individual of the public. She has since decided that she can't commit to the time. Um, I don't know if that's another information on the other one, um, but you've also had someone else come forward in the meantime, so if you do another piece paper, maybe you can just reference the new name versus last week, so we don't go too far into it.
Yep. Thank you.
And I can tell you a little bit about each one of them if you'd like. Ben in town a while, and the other one that talked to him in town for probably six months or so, um, she's a real estate agent in town. The other one, um, does have some knowledge of ordinance, planning boards, um, both equally.
We have one spot open right now.
It's, it's an alternate, I don't want to say alternate, but it's an alternate position and it's only good until June.
Okay. I'm happy with the second name.
Yeah, I mean.
Yeah. I'll, uh, we have an appointment, you probably have a couple ready, so.
I'm ready.
I'm going to make a motion that we appoint Michael Demers to the planning board. Thank you.
An alternate.
Yes, alternate number.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor?
I got a little bit of head, but we should have read that, but that's, we know what it is.
Yeah. You signed yours or you?
I don't have.
I got it right here.
Yeah. No, I don't have one, she gave you the, she gave you the one. Hang on, I'll give it right back to you.
Okay. And we went on to C, abuse and malice station prevention policy.
You got this last week and you reviewed it, um, David did come forward with just one clarification that you wanted and took care of that. Any other thoughts on it?
No, what, what was the one change, anything?
Well, it wasn't that, we didn't change anything, he just wanted to make sure that there was clarification, the whole sleepover thing, you know, there's a difference between, you know, let's just say you coached a team, that, you know, you, you're the coach and your son happens to have Billy and Bob over as, you know, just as individuals and friends, it's not an organizational sleepover.
I just wanted to clarify that.
It's just kids on teams that have friends, that in a mean era, those things happen. It's not the coach in the Town Act and having a sleepover, so we're talking about the mean of it.
Okay.
Want me to make the motion?
Go ahead, you'll get the paperwork in your hand.
Yep.
Yep.
I'll make a motion, we, uh, adopt the abuse and malice station prevention policy.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Okay. Um.
I remember the other line because?
It was added after yesterday. Hey?
Got it.
Get the gold style.
This one originally, um, so I was pressing for a little bit of the warrant finance meeting, certainly not all of it. Um, Kim left this in the box and she called me on it, she said, a couple of changes that the committee recommended or talked about, leave it, I'll let you speak on it because it was there, um, but we can go through the couple of changes as well.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So the paragraph that, um, the recommended, recommended changes on is currently says, if a warrant finance committee member prefers to have a hard copy of the information, he or she can make a blanket request at the beginning of their term to the town administrator to have the documents mailed to them at home, is what it says. Uh, they recommend, um, they can make a blanket request at the beginning of their term to have their documents put in the box at the town hall. Do you want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, I, I was there at the meeting and, I don't know, I, I think the way that we've got the policy written now, the person who does the mailing should be the one that's asked to do the mailing and instead of having that extra or whatever. So I, I think it's fine just the way it is.
Yeah, I mean, we've tried hard to have everything go through the town administrator so everyone gets the information in a timely manner and all the same information, so I think this needs to stay the way it is.
There was one other concern, wasn't there?
I mean, I, I had a conversation with the chair on the phone, I, I don't so much have a, I didn't know about the second part of the change, I don't have a, I mean, it's your decision, you know, I, as far as who they may give like a request to, I personally have a kind of opinion, but the mail versus the town hall, I do have a concern with that because it's, it's, it's easier, you know, I mean, first of all, I don't want to give all the warrant finance committee members or any committee members into the keys and a member works during the day and can't get here, you know what I mean, to leave them in the box, that's a little more difficult, so, you know, what, what we do now, and it seems to work out well, we have two members, one on the road committee and one on the warrant and finance that prefer paper copies, you know, we have to make our efforts for them and we figure this is only a couple months out of the year, because the rest, you know, I mean, for warrant and finance anyways, um, the rest of the year we're not doing it. So, you know, by the end of this time of year, we're sending two free emails a day, we're just, you know, we're printing them all, Cheryl's got a folder, she's, you know, I mean, by the end of the week to mail them. So, um, I, I do understand that there was some discussion about cost because the last packet I did send to everybody, and I tried to explain in the email why I did that, because I wanted to make sure they had the sketches and the plans of Canal Bridge before that Wednesday meeting, but it's certainly not something that happens on very days.
Right, and this is brand new, let's give it a year and see how it works.
Yeah, I mean, the cost, I mean, I think that was probably the only question about cost I heard at the finance meeting the other night, everything else. I didn't hear anything about actual cost, about anything.
The cost of mailing?
What's that?
The cost of the mailing, what do you mean?
Yeah, there were, the finance committee was worried about the cost of mailing the stuff out and, you know.
It wasn't any other cost, it's kind of.
Oh, I didn't hear any budgetary stuff on actual numbers and I'm a little disappointed about that. But, um, no, I, I, it, the problem is with the, we put it at the town hall, there's some people on that committee that, you know, have time to come up, business hours, this and that, then you have other individuals that, you know, work long hours and this and that, and, you know, and, and it's hard enough for them to even come to the meetings in the first place. So to have the stuff mailed to them at home is a, is convenient for them and, um, and I don't want to, I want to inconvenience them by having to come chasing information. So I think just the way we have it is just fine. Um, I think it'll work and like I said, we'll give it a year if it don't work, Ed?
Yep, revamp.
We don't have to vote on that because we already did. So we're off to new business. Um, let's see, four, twenty-seven, twenty-one, warrant.
So, um, we were waiting for just the recommendation from the warrant and finance on our two, which they made on Monday, um, with a five to one vote on it, a no vote. So warrant and finance recommends a no vote, five to one. That was the last thing we were waiting for, so it's the official vote to sign the warrant, we'll get it posted tomorrow and Alex to the radio, probably. Cheryl, I was sleeping over.
I make a motion, do we got to make a motion on that?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'll make a motion, we sign the special town meeting warrant, uh, dated April twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
All in favor, yep. Okay.
I'm not trying to rush you, just trying to keep you straight.
Yeah, I know, I know. I don't do this every week, so a little rusty. We'll sign this one here. Say rusty always a little bit out in the first place.
Guess I should have sat in the middle. I should have sat in the middle tonight.
Yeah, I almost did, but. I'm wondering if I'm going to go up and bring it to Jen for some reason, as I had a issue with bringing them home by accident.
You might have, might not have walked home with one one night?
Yeah, and then you have to go looking for them, so. Okay, we're down to B, twenty-one, twenty-two, draft warrant.
Okay, so what I'm going to, I'm going to look at each article, but we need to approve these. Um, so one, two, three, four, so we did four and four A because, and, and we probably put a lot more information in there we needed and referenced COVID because we talked about the warrant finance campaign during twenty twenty. Um, I, I do think at some point the selectmen in the warrant finance and the voters need to consider reviewing their warrant finance ordinance. It is extremely difficult on the clerk's end to maintain these, people that get elected as alternates, somebody resigns, they get moved up, if they match the same expiration term, following, who's got, who's seen, keeping track of this opening is very difficult.
And you've had the same issue with the, uh, planning board as well.
Right.
You know, for any of these that have alternates and ones that move around.
Right, because if, it would be a lot cleaner, if, you know, if you're a member of the warrant finance, you resign, you were elected till twenty twenty-two, you resign, okay, that new person takes your seat. Because what's happening, what happened today, Cheryl, I must have spent hours on it, we had somebody that was elected in eighteen for two years as an alternate, but in nineteen she was elected as a regular member, but what happened sometime from eighteen to nineteen, but in 19, she was elected as a regular member, but what happened sometime between 18 and 19, somebody else resigned, she got moved up to a regular seat. I mean, it's, it's just a lot, it's a lot of, we're making mistakes, so. Um, we've sent this over to our year's town hall, that has to look at it because it's just so good at that. So, four, 4A, road, uh, road committee will be the same situation as far as COVID, skipping over the zoning, that's all probably stated from the, um, planning board. So, jump in eight, uh, I don't think it's quite as easy right now, eight and nine are all housekeeping articles. Looking for the bridge one. So, 18, 19 is all housekeeping, 20 is housekeeping, 21 is general government. 22 is a new unpaid leader, I have her now, she tried to put, um, some of the new articles, weird general government. She wanted you to know that Goat Hill is not in here because it's already budgeted into general government, it's the last year anyways. So that's already in there. So 23 is new, it's 130,000 for the reevaluation fund. 24 is the 50,000 for the exterior repairs to the site, including the 122 siding. Uh, I did reach out to that contractor that you pulled me to, to ask him if I'm capable, so I can get some better numbers here. Haven't seen him yet, so if anybody does siding, wants to give me, who's the numbers? 25 is the, um, installation of the HVAC system, and we do have quotes on that. Sand and salt alone, that's paying that off for the 23,000. So those are all new. 27, 28, 29, 30, 31, the voluntary work for the truck department. Same with 31, 32, looking for the bridge one.
There wasn't any changes we needed to make to the road commission as one with the wage for the trucks and all that, that was all okay after last year?
That was on last year, yeah.
Yeah, so that's all set, there's no issues?
I don't think there's any changes, any of the wages are shared out.
Okay, yep.
So Article 36, um, this is one of the new ones, you guys, the extra money. See the town vote to appropriate from others and they find 100,000 for the statutory bridge and color observer count. 15 is always for the reserve. Wow, must I just miss it, I've just not seen the noun.
I just, yeah, I was looking for the same thing.
Because I want to make sure that the excess of the 1.25 billion, uh, something is not, I don't even know, but.
All right.
It's got to be in here somewhere, we couldn't have missed that one.
I thought we were only putting forward 40,000 for the, uh, bridge account.
For the what?
Article 36. That changed because of the goat, Goat Hill or something?
Didn't change anything, that was the original number, basically the workshop was traditional.
Yeah.
All ready, we'll wait now, I guess we can look at it. Basically, it was going to Melita, it was the Goat Hill payoff, it was the sand and salt, it was the double rebound payment, um, was the bridge, reserve counts?
No, the we, bridge reserve count, we, at the time, we had 40,000 left, and we went for 40,000, not a cow. Um, and because we didn't do these striking, that's where we made a decision, was either that or that one. And we decided to go do the 40,000, I don't know how the 100,000 got to that number by.
I think the 40,000 was already in it, right, isn't that, let me pull the, let me pull the numbers together and add them up. But we, when all is said and done, we're like 460, so everything is all like the dollar that I gave.
Yeah.
Article 35.
Yeah, there it is. Where the bulk of them were just.
So, see the town vote for raise appropriate, okay, so we want to, um, so the leftover to be placed, any, any unexpended funds to be placed in the statutory river and holder?
Yep. Yeah, I don't think that was 100,000 we were going to put into that.
No, it was 40.
Yeah.
I'll get on my perky.
Yep.
Well, actually, it was just like, so, did I, I thought it was only one of the, um, so 130 was the rebound. 50,000 was the town hall, 25 was the siding, 25,000 was the heating and air conditioning. 223 was the payoff from the sand and salts, maybe she increased it because of the goat, uh, goat.
Were we paying something else off?
Goat farm was only 21,000.
Yeah, paying Goat Hill off.
So that would have brought it up to like 61,000.
So with the 100,000, you're at 5.28.
Yeah, we weren't that high.
No.
All right, we're in the middle of some stuff, we, um, may, what's tracked?
I think we actually were under just slightly.
We were, were we under four, because remember we talked about the last meeting?
We were under four and it was like just a, I, I don't know if it was a couple of grand we didn't spend and that was just going to go back into the designated.
I'll call you all and make sure they're on the same page, because we want to, um, and what we'll do is we'll highlight, so there's a couple of them, like the HVAC and the, um, siding that we want to get Warren Finance more space for those numbers.
Yep.
They have a meeting on Monday, so the goal is, you know, to give them a grant, we'll highlight probably two or three articles now, that, you know, stay away from those until at least the following week, when we can get a little more information, that's okay? But you have a remainder of the whole word to start tackling. Okay, so all about me and that tomorrow.
Okay, we'll settle that one. Okay, we're down to new business, C, Donahue Freedom of Information.
So formally request certain under, um, freedom of information, following information provided to me, uh, town purchase of road installed for the years 2019, 20, and 2021, including the cost per ton, total cost and tonnage purchased. Town purchase are same use for road under maintenance for the same year, and includes the same, I'm not reading them verbatim, but that's essentially what it is. We'll get working on that, FYI. What did I say, you want to give that four?
Right here, right here.
We have to often accept them first before we release it, Michelle has left you that?
Yes. Okay, I went down to D, Fire Department Forestry Equipment Grant.
So they, fire department got a grant in the amount of 692 dollars, I spoke to the fire chief, um, yesterday, uh, regarding to a few, few things, and this was along with the event. Michelle has reviewed it, follows the article, and she signed off, and was going to see if it would back matching funds, gave you all these purchases, and have a, a valid account, so, good job getting the grant. 1692.
Okay, so we're going to accept that, right?
They had to vote to accept the grant and.
Where's the, there we go. Make the motion, Ed.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we accept the forestry grant.
Okay, four, send them out there for 1692. I'll second that, all in favor?
Okay, good.
Okay, where do I sign this one? There we go.
I guess that works, yeah.
That's why I got it.
All the slippers are.
Where are we?
We need somebody like in the tennis games there when the, when the ball ends up going somewhere, I have to have somebody running the back and forth.
Uh, let's see, yeah, we're down to E, Recreation Committee Appointments.
So we've got, uh, one, one from the school, uh, two from the school, um, announcement, and one from a current rec member, I got a neighbor that was interested. So we have, um, three people that are, that have come forward that are interested, um, I've spoken to all three of these. One of them, they all kind of have different things to offer, I think, um, one of them is a registered nurse in town, she's got a couple of small kids. Um, one of them is, um, seems to be more focusing on some older services, you know, for, for older people in town.
Okay.
Um, we've got a member on there that, you know, that, um, it's not, you know, the rec does have to be just about okay, they, you know, cricket game together or something. Um, and then one, I think, is either on the PTC or involved in the PTC, so they're all very, you know, we talk to them about what the rec does and volunteer in committee, and, um, the appointments are only until June 30th, so it gives them a couple of months to give it a shot and see if, um, do they?
Sounds good to me. Yeah.
These are off the same position, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, I will make a, I'll read this like we normally should have. So we have certificate of appointment title 30A MRSA 2602, Selectman's Office Municipality of Acton, two, Tina Burns, Jamie Paquette, is it? Okay, and, yeah, Paquette, yep, and Emily Elmore. The Selectmen of the Municipality of Acton, do in accordance with the provisions and laws of the state of Maine, hereby appoint you as Recreation Committee Member within and for the Municipality of Acton until 6/30/2021. Given under our hand this 26, 24th day of March, 2021.
I'll second that.
Okay.
All in favor? Okay, cool.
It's great to have some new members on that. Thank you to the three that are willing to step forward.
So we're down to nine, public comment. No public comment tonight, so I guess we're down to announcements.
So we have a few.
Yep. So is Town of Minister to read a?
Who was it that came up with this idea?
Very, very busy, upcoming.
Yep.
I just, we're not missing one, you know, maybe we have this one meeting, we've got the calendar, then we've got the website, and, um, so obviously, so you've got Mayor Grant this Saturday, I love it, we've got the Warren Finance on Monday. So next Thursday, the planning board is having a regular meeting, and they're having a full appearance for Iron Tail's conditional use, so that is via Zoom, so we'll be administering that. Uh, Warren Finance again, town of the place, Monday the 5th, Marijuana Committee, this meeting, um, then on the, on the 3rd, they have a public hearing for Iron Tail's liver. Uh, we have gotten, um, calls from the Sheriff's Department in, and a check, a shout of the deputy and fire chief, is there anything else to walk down?
That's usual, right?
That's usual.
Yeah, sounds good. And then on the 3rd, a public hearing for the election, um, 13th, we have a CBA hearing that will be held here in, in the building. During coming and overseeing that. Selectman's meeting, another planning board meeting, with another public hearing, rec committee. Yeah, more stuff in meetings.
Okay. Don't hear a motion.
I have nothing else, I'll make a motion, we adjourn.
I'll second that, all in favor? Good night, everybody.